I'll call the meeting to order. I have 6:34.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Is there any reason to move the agenda around?
Do we want to move Jim up in front of the meeting minutes and everything?
Well, that doesn't...
Good, okay.
The only thing I wanted to mention-
Yes or no? He said no.
I know. But I'm talking about something else.
Okay.
So, the only possibility is, and I don't know if we need to approve it now, we may move the manager's report ahead of Green Mountain National Golf Course. I have Justin at 7 o'clock. So, it all depends on how long Mr. Harrison takes as to whether we would want to jump that up.
Okay.
Okay.
7:25 now, so we have no sense. I'd leave it for now. We can make a change.
Yeah.
We can adjust it later.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know.
All right, thank you. All in favor of accepting the agenda as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion except the minutes of July 16th, as may be amended.
So moved.
Okay.
I am good with that.
I did not have anything myself.
I believe Missy Carr's last name is spelled incorrectly.
Uh, where are you?
Last page.
Should be K-I-R.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's just a typo.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's spelled with a K and a C.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes of July 16th as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
No?
Yes, sorry. It's a long week.
Okay. Select Board member concerns?
I've got a few. One, the white lines down the road, when are they going to be done?
Yeah, I'm trying to get that resolved at this time.
Okay, so every year we go through this?
I know.
Um, so in this next budget, just to make me happy, find out what it costs to, for us to do the white lines that we have it, just for the budget.
Right.
That we have the equipment here, maybe we'll do it.
Do it early in the season.
We don't have to rely on anyone.
Yep.
Okay, we can do it multiple times.
Problem is, is it's a truck. It's not like something you can do with-
I know what it is.
I know.
So, just satisfy me and get a price for it.
All right.
Okay.
Can we get it here?
All right, every year we hear it?
I know.
What would it take to get it here?
Right.
That's what we want to find out.
Okay, so that's one of the lines.
Okay.
Okay, two. Um, there's a group of people that are having a conversation over a phone, which is perfectly fine, but it has to do with what this board set off to, through you, to the planning commission for zoning two bedrooms, two people per bedroom or whatever. Um, you know, they had a little call-in and you just get the phone number. You know, you didn't have to say who you were. You could put it on your phone to say that, you know, it's not knowledge or whatever. And I listened in. Gary spoke for the fire department. He was very, he was very good for it, okay, saying what it was. But there's just a few things that were said that were wrong. One, Killington Hotels, not Killington, the ski resort, because they're all, but the hotels. People are getting confused, thinking that a one-bedroom can only sleep two people because the rule says two people per bedroom. The zoning, new zoning thing and the old one said, two bedrooms per person, per bedroom, unless the state says otherwise. In their hotel, in the condos specifically, I think everyone has a pull-out couch.
Yes.
Okay? I think in the hotel, there are some rooms, like a one-bedroom, that has a, also has a Murphy bed, it has a bedroom, a Murphy bed and a couch that pulls out. In the Act 250 permit, it states that those units can sleep six people. And I believe that's what the resort marketed as, okay? I believe over at Pico, which also the resort rents rooms, there's studios over there that do not have a bedroom, because it's a studio, but it has a couch and it sleeps two. A one-bedroom has the bedroom plus a couch, sleeps four.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands, because there was a conversation going on. The resort will not like this because they have a couch in every single condominium. That couch is in the Act 250 permit. Okay, and I'm sure when the land company goes through, they'll be getting it, and it's all permitted.
Yes.
So...
No, the intent is to permit whatever they're permitted to have.
Right, so the one thing I just want to make sure is, is that, number one, it says, "or" what the state says.
Correct.
Okay? But the state has said on those condominiums, those couches are in there, and they get an extra two people. The Murphy bed gets an extra two people. Um, the second miscommunication thing was on there, is saying that I had gone to a planning commission meeting on this and I had recused myself. Well, first of all, I don't sit on the planning commission, so I can't recuse myself, because I was a public member. What I did say was, is that, and I brought it up here in this, I think this meeting or to you, Chad, that it states that a hotel, short-term, but if it's long-term, it's no longer a hotel. And I said, "So, what am I?" Because I am leasing my building.
We're working on getting that fixed.
And I want that tightened up, that a hotel stays a hotel even if it is long-term rental.
Right, if it, well, the key-
No, I just want to make sure that this is miscommunication going out, or telephones.
Well, I think, I think the biggest confusion that I hear is, is, the intention is to make sure that it meets, what we're trying to do is tie our zoning regulations to the state requirements. We're not trying to create new requirements. We're saying, if there's a fire safety issue, you have to meet that fire safety issue. If there's a wastewater issue, you have to meet that wastewater issue. Whatever the permits say, you're going to be permitted for, but at least we know-
You know what you want.
And that's, and that's the key, and that's why it's a registration program. We're not looking... The issue we have is, we do have people that have gone outside the lines by quite a bit, and without putting in this type of program, we don't have any enforcement capability.
Right.
And in order to be able to manage the process, we have to, to start somewhere.
Listening in on this phone call-in, it also went further by saying, we should contact Mike, meeting up at the resort, and maybe get them to use their counsel. So, to help them fight this, this stuff. I just want to make sure that the resort understands that everything that they're doing is by the state rules and it's already passed by Act 250.
Right, so it's just a matter of, we're going to register. That's all that it means.
Okay.
Right. And we're not, just to supplement what Jim's saying, I manage one of the condominiums, and it's a 40-unit, but yet we're permitted for 121 beds. But it's a state permit, where they've come in and counted bedrooms, beds, and pull-out couches. So, I mean, it's 40 units, but it's 121 beds that's permitted by the state, and that's, that's what we're charged accordingly.
Right.
And that's how we would, we would then-
That's why that-
Register that program with that.
And that's why that sentence says, "Two per bedroom unless the state says differently."
Correct.
That's all I want to make sure. Those are the two things I had concerns on.
Okay. Okay. Good, no say here. Two things not really concerned. One of mine actually has to do with Brown, and since Justin's going to be here, I'll bring it up with him. The other one is just a comment that all of the pavement is now up on East Mountain Road, and-
Except for one short section.
Is it down the bottom?
No, it's actually near High Ridge, I believe, is where there's a little bit left, because there were, there were some depth issues.
Oh, okay.
That was a little deeper than they anticipated.
Because I know they went down and they're back up to the top.
Yeah.
And they finished that this afternoon.
There's one section that got left out because it was like over two feet deep, and they were only able to reclaim 18.
They're going to finish it this week?
Yeah. Well, they're on, they moved to Dean Hill Road for us to get that done, and then they're going to have to go back up.
Okay. Okay, but that's it. Welcome, everybody. We're at the citizen input part.
I'm going to give Mike a chat.
Okay.
It's a follow-up on the rental stuff.
Okay, if you have something, just please like say your name so that people watching will know who you are. But it doesn't look like we have anyone that's not something that's already on the agenda. Okay? So, with that, we will move to our representative, Jim Harrison.
So, thank you. This is probably something you've already seen. This was my recap that I put together of the session. I just really wanted to take the time tonight to check in. Just a couple of things that you might want to provide some input for going forward, and just kind of answer any questions that you might have on the session. As most of you know, it's a little different this year than a year ago in that the session ended basically between the House and the Senate fighting, rather than the House and the Senate fighting with the governor. So, depending on your political persuasion, that may be a good thing, or it may not be a good thing. But that's the way it was. I'm an observer of the legislative process, even though I'm in the process sometime, so I always find it interesting. Eighty-three bills were passed and enacted this year. Two bills were being, that's quite a change from a year ago. And then eight municipal charter changes were approved in addition. So, one of the things I'll come back to on municipal changes that you might want to be thinking about. Social issues, as was mentioned earlier, included the abortion rights. Spent a lot of time on that. We renamed Columbus Day, for whatever reason, but we did. Health issues included changing the tobacco age to 21. I believe that strike came in October. Lead testing of water at schools and daycare. We'll begin, we, the state allocated some money to do that. Environmental issues included things like electric vehicle incentives, emission, emission testing help for older vehicles, an increase, a little increase in weatherization funds. Not that it affects us, but a study of commuter rail, and there was an increase in money for bike paths along some of the highways. Variety of miscellaneous tax changes. Probably the biggest there was a change in how capital gains is figured, which could affect a business owner. If you were selling, you might, you might end up with a more capital gains that you were anticipating. But on the positive side, the estate tax threshold was increased. The exemption was increased. Locally, town recording fees were changed, probably the first time in over a decade that that's happened. Lucretia, as you may know, is very active with the Town Clerks Association. In fact, she put together a report along with some of her colleagues that was the outline of the bill that actually ended up getting done and going forward. One of the good things with that is that it's going to make sure that towns have money for the recording of their records and hopefully get more towards electronic. So, help all the way around. Some of the things that weren't finished this year. Marijuana, we already legalized marijuana, but the commercialization of marijuana, tax and regulate. One of the things, it's passed the Senate, it's passed the House Committee, and now it's got, I think, two more stops in the House, and it will be on the floor next year. Some differences still have to be worked out with the governor. I would predict that at the end of the day, next year, it will pass. We've already had the issue of whether we should legalize marijuana or not. This is how, do we tax it? Do we regulate it? Or do we just let people grow it at home and pretend it's not there? So, I say all that, and I, I'm the only one that voted no in our committee, because I was trying to get a little bit more, but that's okay. That's the process. The thing that you folks have to be thinking about is whether or not you want retail in Killington. The way it came out of our committee is towns would have to vote to allow retail operations. Not dispensaries, that's medical, or regular retail.
Is that a vote by the select board or a vote by the town?
Vote by the town.
Okay.
But that's not definite yet until it comes-
No, things can change. The way the Senate passed the bill, it was assumed all towns are okay for any kind of marijuana. In other words, retail, growing, processing plant. Unless the town voted, took the action to vote, "No, we don't want it." The way our committee looked at it was, you have to actually vote yes to allow retail. The other types of marijuana, you know, dispensary, growing, you have no say on it, unless your zoning has restrictions. So, just, it may change. Before a bill can be enacted, it's got to be reconciled with the governor and the Senate, and who knows whether the House Committees that are still looking at it will have changed. But it's just something to think about. My sense will be, a year from now, you will probably have to make a decision if you want retail. I'm not sure on the other. So, just something to be thinking about. There, an issue that passed the Senate that did not pass the House, it's in the committee I sit on, and that's local governance. Right now, if you have a charter, you can, as most of you know, you can come to the state and say, or you pass something with the voters, you change it, you want to do certain things that are differently, and then the state puts certain blessings on it. Most charter changes are pretty routine, although not all of these. You know, my pillar this year, wanted to institute non-citizen voting. That's still in the local, has not passed. So, the leader cities and towns, and you've probably heard from them, would like a pilot program to do local, to allow local, a group of 10 towns throughout the state, different sizes, to be able to go to the special commission panel that would be set up to do that as opposed to go through the legislature. The problem I have, the way the Senate passed it, is they set up this freestanding board. The town comes with a proposal. We want to, I don't know.
Up the sales tax on rooms and meals.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you're allowed to do. And this panel will go have a hearing and decide whether or not this makes sense. Is it consistent with what, you know, the state's doing? Then, it's got to go to the legislature for approval. My way of thinking is, we've just added more governance to making decisions. So, if we're going to go down that road, we got to figure out a way to do things simpler. That's the way it came over from the Senate, and it came over that way in part because there's an interpretation that our constitution requires the changes to be made by the legislature, not some, we can't necessarily delegate that to some local. And there's a number of things that towns would not be able to do. If anybody's interested, I have a copy of the bill as it came from the Senate. But there are a number of different things that, you know, as you might expect, you wouldn't be able to set, like your own minimum wage, for example. You wouldn't be able to establish separate gun regulations than the state. So, there are things of that nature that are excluded from, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to do something with state highways. You know, you wouldn't be able to change, you know, state sign standards, et cetera. So, anyhow, I'll leave that. If anybody's interested, if you have input, I am happy to talk to you anytime. It will be for our committee. It's in our committee now. It just wasn't something we had time to deal with at the end of the session. There is going to be Act 250, as Steve knows, and probably others. It's been discussed in our House Natural Resources Committee all session. There is likely to, that conversation's going to continue. There will be a push to make some changes. Again, depending on your perspective, there could be good changes and they may not be good changes. So, that remains to be seen. I think if it's controversial coming out of committee, then it's going to have a long ways to go. The process works more often than not to not pass things, which is probably not a bad thing. You know, you have a House, you've got committees, you've got a Senate, you've got committees, you've got a governor. So, we'll see. But I mean, I mean, there's a lot of interest in doing something, but not everybody agrees with that something is. Things that aren't necessarily under radar, but I kind of sense that they will be coming up. One, in part because the Public Safety Commissioner stepped down, Tom Anderson. I would not be surprised if there was another conversation about dispatch services. As you folks know, there's probably 100, 105 towns that get state police dispatch services. Other towns, you know, the other 150, don't necessarily think it's fair that they're paying for that service to the towns that get it essentially from the state. So, I don't know what's going to happen. It's a sticky wicket when we have these conversations. So, I wouldn't be surprised if that's, an issue that more and more towns are having issues with and problems with is finding EMTs and firefighters, first responders. A lot of small towns rely on volunteers, and I am all ears for trying to figure out incentives, whatever we can do to help attract people. Folks are busy, I get it. A lot of families, you know, local jobs. We don't have that volunteer workforce that we would just have over time. So, you know, more and more towns are running into issues on this. So, that's basically all I have, and if you have any questions or comments or input, I'd certainly be happy to.
I just wanted to ask, was it Burlington or South Burlington that was trying to change their charter to go to 2% on the rooms and meals? Were they successful?
The, actually, the, in the town, the town voted it down.
Okay.
So, it never made it-
It never made it to the, okay.
But, just to give you an idea how protective the legislature is on some of the local option taxes. Separately, they did approve a proposal to add a local option tax for rental cars. Now, you might think that's not a big deal, but if you think about where 90% of the rental cars are rented, it's South Burlington, right, because of the airport, which happens to be Burlington property. So, I'm not sure how this all worked out. So, they actually proposed a charter change. It actually came to our committee. You know, we said this is a tax issue. It's not us, so Ways and Means took it. They had a hearing on it, did nothing, because that would, that would have been brand-new. The chair of our Ways and Means Committee is not a big fan of local option taxes, in part because she comes from a very rural area. It doesn't really have that option, and concerned about state taxing capacity. You know, where's the limit? You know, if you allow too much locally, will that impede the state if the state needs to increase it? But, passing judgment, I'm just sharing where the chair and some others are coming from, that that's an issue. So, anyhow.
Well, and then on another note, you brought up the idea of the extra money for charging stations and electric cars and those things. The concern I have, the state is continually pushing, you know, the cold-weather heat pumps and the electric cars, one electric car uses the same amount of energy in a year as an entire house. So, we're looking at tripling demand while the state continues to reduce generation. And solar isn't the answer, because we can't make that much solar. So, it's a, it's a, it's a rate increase nightmare that we're looking at in the future if that continues to too far, we don't start finding some way to generate more power.
Sure.
And it's a, you know-
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of competing interests. You know, right now, arguably, electricity is produced relatively cleanly. We rely a lot on hydro, Quebec, for example, and other hydro plants. So, it's, it's non-polluting. Certainly, solar and wind is not air polluting. So, overall-
One might think.
What's that?
One might think.
Right.
I don't know how they're manufactured without causing any air pollution.
Don't either. I don't know. But, so, so from an air quality standpoint, there's a lot of interest in more and more electric.
Oh, I agree. The issue is-
Capacity and the cost, I totally agree with you.
I mean, it's just that it's a, it's a-
You've got to be very careful.
It's a brick wall we're headed towards, is the concern.
Yeah.
Can you go on the notable tax changes, expansion of the cap of affordable housing tax credit and first-time home buyer tax credit of $125, $125,000? What exactly is that? I don't think anybody in this town knows anything about that.
Yeah, and I didn't get the, I didn't-
If you can just write it up in, if you can bring it up in a paper article or whatever? Because, I mean, I know there's a lot of new families here, and they're looking for houses or whatever, and if there's a tax credit there for that.
Yeah, no, I will be happy to get some more information on that.
You know, number two, a change, for me, a change in the definitions of operator and rent to include online travel agencies like Expedia to ensure the OTAs are met. I thought they already cut those deals and everything prior to be collecting the taxes. No? So, Expedia is not collecting?
So, in fact, I might have talked to you before to try to get, your innkeeper, how that works.
Oh, okay, so it's still not?
Essentially, so if they're charging $100 for the room, but they only pay, so they would charge a tax on $100, but then they would pay the actual property owner $90 because they had a commission.
Right.
And then they pay the state tax. They were interpreting our law, and arguably, that's what they were supposed to do.
Right, okay.
So, believe me, those companies, because I've met with some of them, were not too happy because that was money, tax money they were collecting, but now they've got it back.
Right, right. And my third one, the changes to the land gains tax on here.
Mm-hmm.
Only lands of the way they transferred within six years. What was it? It was seven years before. It died out after six years anyway.
Yeah, no, the, the land gains tax part didn't really change. The problem was, there might be 2,500 filings every year, and 2,200 of them were never going to pay any tax. So, then they have to go back and get paperwork from the state and okay to not have to do a escrow. And what they tried to do by eliminating some of that is to really gain those that are going to have to pay the tax. Those would have to be escrowed.
Okay, and then, and then the last one here, and it exempts land transfer in downtown village center, downtown or village center or new town center.
Yes, that's new.
So, if, Chad, if you can talk with Jim maybe on that there? I mean, I don't think we're designated as any downtown or village center or new town center.
No.
So, so if we can have that conversation, and then-
We are Regional Growth Center.
We are, right, we are Regional Growth Center. So, and then the last thing is here is on the back page. Just, just my, you know, Act 250 reform never made it out, but following a summer study committee, proponents of the changes hope to add new criteria on how a development will impact climate change. I'm really serious, like, you know, I mean, about, I'm hoping this doesn't go like California where new develop means you have to put up X amount of solar panels and everything else, because I don't think anybody has down yet that, you know, they think solar panels are great. They're made somewhere, and it's made with a lot of stuff that pollutes wherever. And I don't think anybody has down where we're going to throw these things out in 30 years from now. I, I think right now, we're trying to make our landfills last longer. Dumping these things in 30 years is going to be a big problem.
And you probably, arguably, you wouldn't want them in a landfill.
Yeah, right. So, what I'm saying is, I'm hoping you, as a representative, will watch out for, you know, something like that and bring it to our attention. That's all I got.
Hey, Justin.
Yes, hey, Justin.
I was to check if you had audio. I was just a test.
I'm good right now, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm good.
Wasn't cutting you off. I was just testing.
Hey, Justin.
How you doing, Justin? You're up.
How's everyone doing?
Doing great.
Doing great.
Okay, are we diving right into the AJGA?
Yes.
Okay, so, I spoke to Chad yesterday a little bit, he gave you, you know, just kind of an update on your decision that was, you know, facing us with respect to this tournament at Green Mountain. And my initial, Chad and I talked about a couple of things, namely, you know, there's no way for me to track or provide data to the ancillary value it has to the town with respect to lodging, meals, et cetera, and just patronage of the, of the access road and the local establishments with all the parents and family members and, and, you know, everyone that, that comes to the tournament. So, it's, I'm not going to be able to provide, you know, any insight on that, but from a strictly golf course standpoint, and this is kind of contrary to what I told Chad yesterday because I dug a little deeper on the data, and the number I was originally working off with thought was inclusive of, or not inclusive of the practice rounds, but it actually was. So, what I did is I went back and pulled the weeks that bookmark, a bookend, the, the week around our AJGA for the last couple of years, just to see total revenue threshold and then what the revenue threshold of the week is and what we had at AJGA, and then also too, how that factors into our labor. So, the average week prior to the AJGA is right around 35, 36,000 in total golf revenue, and the average week post AJGA is right around 28, 29,000. The week of the AJGA is right around 20 at the golf course. So, there's, there's a variance there of about 12 grand if you average all three weeks together, based on the AJGA. And then our average labor from those bookend weeks is about 13.8 FTEs, which are essentially four times, 14 full-time employees working at the club, but the week leading up to and the week of the AJGA, we're averaging about 16 and a half FTEs, which again, is another cost occurrence to the facility of about 3,600. So, really, the, the revenue that we're cannibalizing and the addition to our course maintenance hours to get the course in playing condition for that tournament, we're looking at about $16,000 is the cost for us to put that tournament up every year. Now, you know, there is some value to the AJGA events, it's a prestigious event, however, like I told Chad, Green Mountain National's reputation is, I mean, it's etched in stone at this point, it's not going anywhere. You know, we're firmly rooted in the marketplace, people know about us, consistently ranked very highly in the state. So, I don't think that the AJGA at this point is providing us, you know, any additional moxie, so to speak. So, just from a pure data standpoint, from a golf course standpoint, you know, my recommendation just from a golf operator outside of knowing any, you know, ancillary income that is generated by the patronage of the access road, would, my recommendation would be to, you know, not renew the contract at this point, particularly for a scenario like next year where the, the tournament falls on a weekend.
I thought that the tournament was never falling on a weekend.
Well, I mean, next year, the fourth is Saturday.
Yeah, but, I mean, we've had that before where they have actually...
And they move it up a couple of days.
They moved it. I'm just, I'm just asking, but...
I haven't seen their dates yet, and, and, you know, if it was on Monday through Thursday of that same week, would that change your, your recommendation?
No, I mean, because the data I was pulling off of was non-weekend dates anyway.
I, I knew his answer was more...
I know, I know what's going, but I just wanted to ask the question.
I was just saying that, I was shocked if it's installed.
Well, I mean, that's something we'd have to go check on the new contract, because I think the resort has that listed with what next year's dates are, I believe, is in the contract that you guys signed. And I don't remember what they are at this point. Yeah, but we can, we can check that.
So, I mean, the recommendation is purely from a fiscal standpoint for the golf course, period, you know, outside of anything the town, you know, incurs. You know, if the select board and the town feel that it's, you know, a good opportunity to, you know, showcase the, the area and, and some of the local establishments, then great, then, you know, I can't really put a price on that. But from purely just the golf operations standpoint for Green Mountain National, it's costing us money, and it's costing us thousands and thousands of dollars in potential sales every year.
Well, just, I don't know, Amy, I was just wondering what the resort's view of what we've done to this point, how it worked this year for you guys, and what you think going forward.
Yeah, I mean, for this event, I don't think we see too much review coming to the mountain. We did, we sold a lot, a couple of lodging packages. If you guys decide to hold the tournament and think it's a good fit for the community, we would support it, we would support it next year. I can't speak for all the area restaurants and lodging properties, though.
That Friday was, I mean, I'm not sure if this is true, but I had heard was probably, and it had nothing to do with the AJGA, it was people that were already in town, that Friday I heard was your busiest day in the summer.
The Friday of the 4th of July.
The Fri-, the Friday of the 4th of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard it was, there was a lot of people up on the hill, not down at the, the golf course. I mean, I, I've heard, I heard this last year from Justin and, and, and John Brown stating that, you know, they've, they get the golf course going, revenue's up the week of, the week prior, and then all of a sudden it falls down because we're closing the golf course up for this event, and then it takes like another week to get back up. You're saying the post, the week after is 28, 29K, and then we get back, and then we get back into the groove after that?
Correct.
And what is that second week after, once we're back in? Do you have that number or no?
It's back into the 30s that following second week, generally.
Yeah, I mean, because I, I think what I heard last year was, it's like, you know, we finally get the golf course going, then we shut down for a week, and then it takes a little more time to get the momentum going back up again.
Right.
Is there any other event, or is there a way of moving this event to a different time? And if there was, if there was a different time, obviously you wouldn't want to move it to the prior week, is there a way of moving it, you know? What's the, what's two weeks prior to the event? Do you have those numbers? You should know I'm asking these questions.
I don't have two weeks prior, but I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's going to be, well, actually, two weeks prior would be, make a lot more sense for us, Jim, just from a, from a business volume standpoint, because we're not going to be as, I mean, we really hit our stride, you know, like you said, end of June, beginning of July, and then we have this event. But, I don't know, I mean, we can certainly try to renegotiate, you know, the dates. I know for that, there may concern with, you know, that we have enough time to get the golf course in premium state, but at the end of the day, you know, do we really, I mean, you know, we're not operating Green Mountain National just for the AJGA, you know?
Right, right. And when it first came here, it was in the middle of June, which was the two weeks...
It wasn't the 4th of July weekend.
And it wasn't the prior week, it was two weeks before the 4th of July, and that goes more into where I'm getting at. I think we're killing, you know, killing our revenue, and, you know, it just, you're down about 12,000, 15, somewhere between 12 and 15,000 in revenue, okay? And your, and your cost is $16,000, and for a golf course that we have to, you know, get to a point, we're really, we're fighting our own battle here, you know, we're just... I would say that we would have to, I, I would not be agreeing to have it the same week. I would think that we have to have the conversation to have it two weeks prior if they're interested to hold it. I'm only one of three, so...
And Amy, we were, when we were on the phone, we talked about, you know, evaluating whether there's other opportunities out there. Do we have anything that we have in mind yet, or is that still just preliminary discussion?
That's still preliminary. I don't know many golf events that we've encountered.
I'm just talking about town events.
We're not talking just golf, we're talking, yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, we're always exploring different events, nothing is set in stone.
Okay. Yeah, no, I wasn't thinking golf events.
We're talking to new events, partners, all the time.
I mean, I think this is just like the, when we had the women here, that, you know, things run their course, and, you know.
Well, there are other factors in that one.
We want to authorize Brown to move, see if they can negotiate two weeks sooner?
Well, I would be in favor of that, yeah. Trying to go in June.
And if it doesn't, and if it doesn't work, we're going to...
We'll have another conversation.
Right.
We're not making a decision. Right now, I mean, I don't think we need a motion, it's negotiating, and we're just letting Brown Golf move forward and talk to AJGA about moving it two weeks prior.
Okay.
And then, and then, and Brown can get back to us on how that conversation went. They are managing the golf course, so...
Yeah, if we can move it up.
Yeah, no problem. I'll reach out to Patrick Plank, the, the tournament director, and just have that preliminary conversation.
Okay. And then the other part of the news is you're moving on.
I am, yeah. I sent a, a letter to the select board and obviously you're, so, Chad, I have a new opportunity. Been with Brown for eight years, eight great years, not worried about, you know, operations at Green Mountain, they'll take great, great care of you after I'm gone. And so, my last official day with Brown is Friday, August 9th, and, you know, just personally, I've really enjoyed my time at all the facilities I oversee, and Green Mountain has a soft spot. I love the town, I love the people, and it's been a great opportunity for me. But, August 9th is my, my last day, and I'll work with the corporate team and the onsite team to ensure a smooth transition. If you have any questions, I'm always available.
Yeah, I have a question that came up this last Sunday, and it has to do with, when someone makes a tee time, are they required to leave a credit card deposit?
Well, I mean, when we, when we enter a tee time, no, not a deposit, but when you enter a tee time in Easy Links, it asks for a credit card number. Certainly when you make a tee time through any of our online rate channels, you have to have a credit card. If you're doing it manually and you call into the pro shop and you're entering in Easy Links, it's not going to be mandatory from a, from, from securing a tee time standpoint, but still should be done, you know, just from a practice standpoint of, you know, ensuring that if someone doesn't show up and they don't make, you know, they don't give notice that, you know, we charge them at that point.
Well, because what happened was, we had three tee times that played on Saturday, and Sunday, late morning, they had reserved three tee times and just plain didn't show up. And the course was packed on the weekend, even as hot as it was. I just think that we should have some, there should be some type of penalty. I mean, if they had called ahead and said, "We're not going to make it," that's one thing, but they just plain didn't show up, and since they hadn't left a credit card, they walked away from it, and we had three blank tee times in late Sunday morning that they probably could have booked.
So, this was a discussion we had last year also, it was that any of these online services, they take the credit card, and if they don't call in, their cards are charged. It's what we're doing at the golf course.
But I'm thinking we need to do it at the course.
We need to, you know what I'm saying, we need to, we need to train our people to do it the same.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so, I mean, that, that to me would be a step that we have to do. Anybody taking reservations needs to, needs to be taking credit card information and making sure that they understand that this thing and whatever. What is the cancellation policy, Justin, with some of these services? I think it was like 24 or 48 hours?
It's 24 hours.
Right. So, that's, but, but just to be sure that when you make a cancellation for inside your own place, you have to make sure it's known that it's 24 hours, otherwise, if you don't have it written down, you're, they'll, they can fight it.
Okay. But that was just something, it was brought up to me when I went in on Sunday afternoon, and they just asked me to pass it on.
So, we're asking you to...
I'll come back with the golf stat tomorrow and just, I mean, I'll just make sure that, you know, I mean, we have to take credit card information, we just have to. I mean, that's just, you know, today's age, so, I'll talk to David, Ian, and Emily, make sure that that's being done on a consistent basis, not just with our online rate channels.
Okay.
Keep in touch, Justin.
Oh, I will, I'm going to come up and I'm going to ski, and...
Play golf and drink beer?
Maybe, we'll see, I wouldn't mind it.
All right, keep in touch. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Okay. He's moving on over to a fitness center type thing.
Planet Fitness.
Yeah, Planet Fitness.
Okay. Number eight is employee handbook, personnel policy review.
Well, the first item is a, actually a state requirement now, that we have to have a policy regarding conflicts of interest and ethical conduct. It's, it's the VLCT boilerplate system that meets the state requirements, it relates to when people have, or should be refusing themselves, what the disciplinary action is for elected officials, and things of that nature. It's, you know, I don't know how much detail you want to go into in discussing it, it's very standard.
So, we asked you to write up a handbook for the employees, and the first thing you're giving us is something for us?
Well, the handbook for the employees is, it's the next item. We, this is just something we're actually supposed to...
Like I said, the first thing you give us is...
I understand, and I knew I was going to hear about it.
We take the oath on this, don't we?
Yes, we do. But it is a requirement that we have this in writing.
Yeah.
So...
This is something I don't know that we have a lot of options on.
No.
If it's already been approved by VLCT.
No, he's just giving me a hard time because I chose to put this first.
I know. Wouldn't be a meeting without giving you a hard time.
Yeah. So, do we need to make a motion to accept this?
You have to make a motion and then sign it, and it gets adopted immediately upon acceptance of the select board. That's the way it's written. This policy shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the Town of Killington Select Board.
That's the last line in here.
And this is the one to sign if you wanted to indulge.
Do you want time to look at this?
Yeah.
Before we load on it?
I mean, it's not something we have to vote on tonight, but I just want to...
Okay, why don't you hang on to that then?
Done.
All right. Can we put this on our next agenda for a vote?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Can you click on...
You want the conflict of interest up or the personnel?
We're already done with that one.
Okay, here's personnel.
No conflict there.
So, this is a draft of the employee handbook, which covers all the general policies and conduct and, and benefit items. This will also, and it identifies the, our benefits section that we had approved last year, where it took out all the duplicate items, would then be attached to this and become part of it. So, if you would like, I don't know how, we want to go about this, but there's quite a few sections to go through, and we could talk about, I mean, most of them, the, the beginning ones are pretty boilerplate. But title and authority, you know, is 24 VSA, 1121 and 1122, and the personnel policy does not constitute a con, a contract of employment. Employment with the Town of Killington is at will and not for any definitive period or succession of time. And then it identifies the people that are covered, which is all full-time employees, and that includes anybody who's permanently employed at 30 hours or more, does not include seasonals.
So, the last paragraph in section two...
Mm-hmm.
Where conflict exists between this policy and any collective bargaining agreement? We don't have any collective...
We don't have one, but I guess the, the reason they recommend it is if it ever happened, it would be in the policy, or we can, we can take it out if you want, that's not, that's an easy one.
You know, I mean, I can see the individual employment contract that, but we don't have employee contracts either.
No. So, you want to just strike that?
I would strike it. I mean, we're not, we're not going with contracts, so...
Then the next section deals with, we're an equal opportunity employer.
That's pretty much, that's pretty much a standard.
That's a standard. It identifies a standard probationary period of 180 days, when, which no vacation or benefits or take place at that period of time. After the end of six months is when sick time begins to accrue, and also vacation time and things of that nature.
And that's the way we were written up anyway, since the month, right?
Yes, this is, this is the way it is now. Just an identification of conduct employees, which is, um, how they can carry themselves both, um, within the town and out in the public. And, you know, the, all employees are expected to faithfully execute their duties and responsibilities at their office to the best of their abilities and in compliance with the provisions of this policy. And then there's a duplicate piece that just identifies some of the conflicts of interest, which would be for all of the, uh, the employees in addition to the one that, that we're proposing be signed by the select board. And then there's our town off hours of service, um, which identify the town office hours and the, uh, the highway cruise hours. Um, and then it identif, and it talks about the on-call assignments and things like that. And all of this is what we're doing currently.
And just, but the clerk is not into that because the clerk gets by statute to set their own hours.
Correct.
Yeah, they're not employed by, well.
Right.
They're voted in by the, so, I mean, I would just make sure that if anyone, hours of service.
There actually is a, there's a provision in this policy that ties the clerk's office and the treasurer's office to this.
Time schedule?
Ti, well, not the time schedule, but to the, to the employment rules.
Employment rules?
Yeah. Not for, not for the time schedule. Um, the next section deals with outside employment and, you know, the fact that the town's work comes first and, uh, employees are not expected to take on work that's going to affect their work here. And conflicts of interest related to, and who I, who is identified as those, such as civil union partners, domestic partners, household members, child stepdaughter.
Can we jump back to seven for a minute?
Did I jump? Oh, sorry.
No, I jumped back as you went to, okay. The first paragraph, um, lasts on Monday through Friday with 15 minutes paid time allowed for lunch. We're only allowing 15 minutes for lunch?
Well, what, what, the way it has always worked in town office, nobody takes a formal lunch break. Most people just eat at their desk and they take a couple of minutes and it's not a formal, like, lunch break where we close for an hour or half an hour. So that's just how it's always been. Um, if we, you know, if we want to put in a defined 30 minutes, then that'll change some of the times. It just, you know, it's, I, it just means that there's no deduction for that for hourly people. If they're just working, they want to take 15 minutes, works like a coffee break, basically.
I mean, I don't have a problem with people taking lunch and working in town and getting paid. I just don't think we should be having, saying, 15 minutes.
So if we could just, I, we could just, we could just strike that item.
You know, I mean, that, I mean, I think that's up to you, the town, you know, this is, this is a gamble.
Yep.
But, I mean, something that, that's strict, I mean.
I'll just, I'll just, we'll, we'll strike that and just leave it at 8:30 to 4:30.
Okay. And I think it's up to you to.
Yep.
Make sure that nobody's.
Yep, this was all, these were, these were recommendations that came from VLCT, so I'm just.
And I'm reading it.
Yep. No, I appreciate it. So out, out, outside employment was a political activity. Can't use the town basically for, uh, political opinions or, you know, they can, they can do what they want, but they can't make it affect the town. Employees are prohibited from using town facilities and equipment and resources for political purposes. Nepotism, um, related to relatives, obviously. And alcohol and drug use are prohibited. Tobacco use is prohibited on all publicly owned buildings anyway, so it's just a, a reiteration of that. Uh, performance evaluations are something we have not been doing, um, that we will be doing going forward. Um, with, as we get the job descriptions aligned and that'll be part of the next phase of this. Personnel records, it's basically just how we maintain them. Uh, use of town equipment. No one can use town equipment for personal use or town facilities. So it's just a pretty straightforward com, comment. Use of personal equipment for town business. People have personal cell phone use and personal vehicle use where they are traveling to conferences and things like that for mileage. Um, this just identifies what the rules are for that. It's basically a reimbursement program for the cell phone use. We currently pay a stipend for people who use, who are required to have, uh, 24-hour access, whether it's the email, texts, or a phone service. So we do pay them if they want to use their own phone or the town would separately provide a town phone. We currently had one person using a town phone and the rest are personal use with stipends. And the rate is actually like a dollar fifty cheaper for the stipend. That's the way it works. Personal vehicle use, we basically just pay at the IRS rate. I think it's, is it 54 cents now or 50? I can't remember. It's something like that. So, and then we, or, and whenever possible, we try to have people use the, uh, the Escape, um, which is far less expensive for the town. So we do that most of the time. Sometimes there's duplications. Policy related to the use of town computer systems and, and expectations of privacy. These are all some of the issues that have come up over time. Um, I know in the past there was questions about, you know, people deleting emails and things of that nature. And we can't delete anything that has to do with town business. But I do delete propaganda emails, as in we want to sell you something. But that's as far as it goes. But all other emails are required to be maintained by the.
Who oversees our emails? Don't we have, don't we have, um, somebody that? If, if, I mean, you, you think you're deleting your email, but you're not. Um, but if somebody asks for all the emails, there, there's, isn't there a trustee or some, what is the word?
I don't, yeah, I know there's the, yeah, it's the trustee of the documents or something like that. It's, yeah. And all of, you know, actually, um, the two previous town managers had a very large deleted email section, but they were all in the deleted emails on the computer, so I reestablished them all.
Right.
So we have access to all of them.
Supposed to be overseeing the, not, not overseeing them, but storing.
We are storing it. We are, it's archived.
Okay.
We do archive those.
Even the deleted emails are being archived?
Technically, yeah.
No, not technically, really.
Yeah. It's fine.
Just, you know. So, I mean, I would just, you know, if, if you want, if you, if you're using a town employ, a town computer or a town email, you, you really should just be keeping it to the town.
Right, right. Yeah, no, this is not for personal use and that's one of the things we want to do. Just make, and this is, I, it's both a statutory requirement, but it's also information because a lot of people aren't aware when they start to, to make sure that they know how they have to treat them. And, and the fact is that all emails are legal documents and, and carry a lot of liability with them. Eligibility for benefits. Basically, this just talks about we, what we offer, general insurance programs and the benefit for eligible full-time employees. Details of those benefits are included as an attachment to this policy. And that's the, the, uh, employment benefit section that we had last year. Um, and then it lists what holidays the town currently has off. At some point, I might like to discuss modifying that. Vacation leave and basically that's the same program that was in last year's, uh, benefits section. It's just now located in the, in the employment policy section. Um, it does talk about that we can carry over one week and then anything other than that would be, would be lost. So there isn't any, uh, long-term accumulation and vacation must be taken in minimum of two-hour increments.
So the most you could carry over would be one week regardless of whether you use it or not?
That's correct.
It can't be continually carried.
Correct.
Okay.
Because that creates, that, those are considered on. Yeah, and it, and, and then it ends up something you have to pay 10 years from now and it doesn't work out so well.
So my question on that is, is that if a person gets up to 12-plus years and 25 days paid vacation, but it's just not available for them to really take because of their position, are we paying that out in, in, in vacation pay to them?
We have done that in the past where if there was extenuating circumstances that somebody just couldn't take their vacation, then we would say, well, look, we're asking them not to take the vacation. We will compensate for it.
Where is that in this?
It is not written in here and we would have to write that.
We got that in there.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, that's not, you know, that used to happen to me where I couldn't leave work and.
So that, yeah, that's something we should.
And they would pay me those weeks, so.
Yep. Sick leave, um, basically this relates to the, actually became a state mandate. We've always provided the five days per year, accumulated up to 20 days total. It is not something we have paid, uh, when someone leaves at the end, but they are able to accumulate 20 days. The limit that they can get per year is the 40 hours. So that policy is exactly how we're using it now. Uh, bereavement leave, basically, uh, we, three paid days for anybody who has a bereavement within the confines of the family members listed, parents, step-parent, grandparents, spouse, civil union, down to children and things like that. If additional time is needed, would have to be approved by the staff and, and that.
And all this stuff is basically statutes in here?
Yeah, this is all basically the same boilerplate. That we're doing family and ferment, parental and family leave is this, is statute.
Right.
Um, short-term family leave.
Statute.
And leave of absence without pay. Identified military leave, jury leave. We actually have, we pay people, if they're forced to go on jury leave, we have paid them their normal rate so that they don't want to not do it. So, um, we have, that's something we're continuing. Uh, overtime for non-exempt employees, time and a half or over 40 hours must be approved in advance. Um, employment harassment and discrimination, again, statutory requirements. And then it goes on to tell you where to file the complaints. And the same thing for sexual harassment, lists all of the items and, and how that would be addressed. And then we move on to employee discipline.
Well, can we move back to 17, page nine?
Yep.
Page nine? Page nine, yeah, you moved that, you know, he's gone pretty quick though. Went and sort of slowed down or whatever. Eligibility for benefits.
Yep.
So we're dropping the part that it says here the town office, the town office group insurance programs are the benefit of its eligible full-time employees. We're dropping the part that, um, if you decline the insurance, that you're getting paid?
Well, that's in, that's in the, that's in the attachment.
Benefits attachment?
That's in the attachment.
Does it say in here, see the, see the benefit?
Yes, it says right there, um, if applicable, included is an attachment to this policy.
Okay.
So that, those are, that's the attachment of the same policies that were in, in active.
You know where I, I mean.
Yes, I know where you're going.
We, 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 we offer insurance for anyone that works for us. I have a really hard time saying because somebody else's spouse can get insurance that now the town is going to give how much of that insurance policy?
38%.
38%? I just have a hard time with that.
The, uh, City of Rutland does the same thing. The issue is if, if that benefit.
I have a hard time with that too, in the City of Rutland.
If the benefit were not offered, then people would take the insurance and have the duplicate insurance and it would cost the town more money. So it's just a matter of, it is a savings for the town and I think that's why it was offered going forward. So it is a savings of possibly 6, 7,000.
So my biggest problem is, is that, you know, in it, it states that it must be equal or better insurance than we have. And, and we know for a fact now going through that, you know, we, we've had somebody that was just on social security and we, and.
It was my understanding, as I did, talked to some people afterwards, um, that in that particular case, it was negotiated as part of the deal so that it would save the town money that they were willing to, to make that agreement. That's what I've learned. And that was not from the person that, that was involved in the benefit. So, but going forward, that's how we would address it.
It, it, it's clearly states that it has to be equal or better.
Right.
Cause the whole idea about it is to make sure that your employees are covered for insurance.
Right.
So by saying to that person, "I will give you," or any people, "I will give you 38% to get onto a cheaper insurance policy," blows the whole idea of what you're trying to do.
I agree. We no longer have that situation.
Thank you.
And then we just, the, the last couple of items are employee discipline and the methods for that, employee termination process, and severability, um, where it's identified and how we would go about it. So, I mean, with the exception of the couple of things we talked about, it's fairly straightforward. It's, you know, I'm not expecting you to make a motion at this time, but I think we will, I'll put it back on the agenda for the 20th. And then we can, if anybody has any questions, we can address those then. Give you some more time to, to look it over. But I think in general, um, it would be a really good framework to have to make sure that we have the proper procedures and policies. And we were also, and I'm hoping by the 20th, that's gonna be a very busy meeting, is to have most, if not all, of the, the job descriptions for review at the same time, that we could then attach to this as well.
So underneath the employee benefits.
Yep.
There, and, I mean, I just want to make sure, I, I don't see yet, I gotta read through this all. But there was an issue that I had brought up the last time where it stated that, you know, um.
Last two paragraphs.
Managers or whatever could be paid for whatever, ever. So I was like, why are we then having long-term disability? Do you remember that issue?
Yeah, that's out, that just came out of here. That's out.
So you have so many days of being sick.
Right, and that's.
And then you go on to your long-term disability.
Disability, correct. That's out of this, that's out of this. I took that out the, the other day.
That's, I'll read through it, but this.
Yeah, I think that got, I got that one out.
Okay. Think it's a good first run.
Okay. Start. We don't really need any motions because we're not adopting anything at this time.
No, they'll just, both, both of those items, the, uh, conflict of interest policy and this will be on the agenda for the next time as well. If there's any amendments that you'd like to have in advance, I can, you know, if somebody has a comment, we can possibly address it ahead.
I would just like to bring up to the board, the one I think that you should really talk about is the, um, on-call. I mean, you're putting somebody on call for snowstorms or whatever and you're just gonna give them 15 bucks for the day?
That's something that's been in effect for a couple of years. It's actually what the state does, your on-call.
It's 15 dollars.
15 dollars a day.
You have to cancel out any of your plans, really, like, no?
Well, no, you, you have the option, you have the option to do away with, you're not, if you say, "I can't be on-call," then you don't get paid.
Okay.
So it, you can decline it. Like people have said, "I got a party tonight and I'm gonna have to, there's gonna be alcohol, so I'm not gonna be able to plow." And we would then address that, if that had happened. If it was a big storm, we wouldn't allow it.
Someone that's away.
So it's basically, they, they tell Ricky ahead, "We're not gonna be, you know, I got a family reunion I'm going to and I'm gonna be out for Saturday."
On that one there, I think. That's too low.
So they're only paid if they're available?
That's correct.
Okay.
I do have one question on the retirement benefits.
Yep.
Under, it says, full-time employees hired before July 1st, the town will pay the employer's employee share of the contribution after four years of continuous service. But it mentions two different benefits, social security and Vermont Muni employee.
This is, this relates to VEMR's, the, the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System?
Okay, so should be add something that makes it clear.
That identifies it.
Yeah, like, cause it's kind of.
It just, when we talk about social security, we're just telling them what the benefit is. I don't, we don't even have to have that in there at all, really. But I will, we're gonna put that in the sentence.
It's kind of vague.
I would agree, we don't have to have in that. We pay the 7.65%.
I mean, that just doesn't need to be there.
Part of standard deduction.
Two types and take social security out. We provide, we provide the VEMR's retirement system.
We, we've had this discussion, I've had this discussion many times. I think in 2000, whatever it was, 10, 11, 12, when I was on the board, I think the town actually even had a vote on, on, on this or whatever. I mean, it was, there's certain things that went on. I mean, what we're saying here is that you work for the Town of Killington, the first four, the first three years, 11 months and whatever days, that the town will kick in 7.65% of the employee's gross pay, oh, 7.66, 7.65% to VEMR's or whatever.
That's social security. That's social security.
Well, how much do we kick into the?
Five, it's five percent.
Five percent, and then once you work here for five, for four years, now the town is going to kick in the five percent also for you.
That's, that's been in, in play since nineteen ninety-five, and some people were hired, and that's why, when you look at the last two paragraphs in that section, one was anybody hired prior to July first, and then after July first, two thousand eighteen, that's no longer the case.
Chuck wasn't here last year, so that was part of the.
Right, what we did is, is we identified that all new people are not going to get that.
I'm still, I don't agree with it, but it's because people have been here for so long, and it's there, and it's not nice to take away.
They were hired under that.
Right, they were hired on that, that.
How they were hired.
But, we don't, we're not taking a benefit away from them.
So, all employees hired after.
But anybody new is going to continue to pay their five percent.
Is there a difference in those two?
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
Managers' report? Uh, I have two driveway permits, they're both from, uh, Instone Investments, uh, both are on Killington Road, um, they had put in some fill in the drainage ditches, and I've had them remove it, um, but there's two separate lots, right alongside each other.
Across the street from their existing business?
Yes, this is across the street from their existing business, there's two lots, they're requesting a driveway permit at both, um, I have talked to Andrew about what the requirements would be, um, and for the lot one fifty-one, which is the one further, uh, up the road, um, basically, that one will not require a culvert, because there's a large cross culvert rate adjacent to that property, so it's basically just getting the drainage into the rest of the ditch, so will not require that, he's got to remove all fill from the existing ditch, hay and seed, uh, there won't be a culvert required, and flow must be directed toward the ditch line and away from the roadway, making sure that all stormwater gets off the, the driveway before it gets to the, to the roadway, and on the other one, um, that one will require a twenty-four inch culvert, and the driveway must be constructed at a ninety-degree angle from Killington Road, um, for the first thirty feet, um, and then also, the flow must be directed toward the ditch line away from there, and remove all fill from the existing ditch, he's done most of that, and he's in the process of seeding it, um, so I think we can move forward with, uh, approving these two.
So he's done most of it, he hasn't done all of it.
But he does, this is a conditional, and I'm not going to give it to him until I, he meets the requirement.
I'm not going to vote yes until it's not.
Okay, well, then, then we'll, we'll hold this until n- next time, and I just wanted to bring it to you.
Well, they may could vote yes, but I'm, you know.
I, I agree with you, that's my.
People need, people need to understand that you don't do the work first.
Right.
And then file for the permit.
Correct, and, and I agree with that, and that's what I told him, that's why we didn't, I didn't even bring it to you last week, this time, he had done most of the work, and I brought it, but I agree with the fact that we should not be issuing the permit at this time.
Okay, so we'll just drop that, and you can deal with Andrew.
And that'll be on the next agenda.
On the next agenda. I'll take the hit.
Killington Road Master Plan update.
No, it's cart before the horse.
Killington Road Master Plan update is, I have a meeting with, uh, VHB next Thursday to try and get this kicked off, uh, want to get the contract all tied up, so when we come, meet on August twentieth, we can do the contract and, and get that process started, so hopefully by the end of August, we'll, we'll have authorization to proceed and move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, rec director interviews begin tomorrow, they will be happening tomorrow and Friday for the first round, and then on Friday afternoon, we'll be deciding, um, whether we have a candidate that we've already selected, or who we want to move forward with a second interview, um, so we'll make that decision Friday, and, uh, we'll be moving on to the next phase next week, if, assuming that's the case.
And we had ten applicant?
Eleven, had another one come in right at like five-thirty last night.
Okay, so when we write this up in the minutes, let's just make sure we say rec director slash after school.
After school, right.
Yes, it's a combined job.
So, um, I have, somewhere here, two lister corrections, oh, here they are, right next to me. Um, receive, listers received notice from Forest Harper, purchaser of Ron Willis's lot, and subdivided and sold, reported that his tax bill he received was incorrect and should be corrected, um, the tax bill reflects only the value of the mobile home that is on the lot, didn't include the land, so this is a correction that increased the tax bill, um, so we had somebody actually call and ask for an increase.
Well, he wants to make sure he's paying it, because it's subdivided land.
Exactly.
You're not paying, and then it's not.
It's not yours. Lister received notice from Go Slope, reporting that the tax bill he received was incorrect and should be corrected, they grieved their assessment to the support of civil authority, and their assessment was changed from five ninety-four oh forty to five nineteen oh forty, uh, the change was made in two thousand eighteen, but was not changed on the working grant list, and then was used to create the two thousand nineteen tax bill, this will correct the evaluation.
So motion to accept the listers', what is this called?
Adjustment?
Adjust, no, there's, what, what did you call it? Errors? It's called errors, right? Listers' errors.
Yeah, errors and admissions.
Yeah, errors and admissions.
Oh, incorrect and should be corrected, yeah, okay. Could you, uh, have bigger lines next time, I hope you take half a page line.
I don't think, actually, the listers create those.
Don't worry, I got plenty of room to, to the right of yours.
I have more than four letters in my.
Yeah, I got a lot.
We got all three up there. Um, okay, uh, date, I don't remember, twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Amy, are you planning on, since you're the new communicator in the community, showing up to meetings?
I try.
You're trying? No, I was just going to say that in the planning commission, underneath the manager's report, B, the Killington Road Master Plan Update, that has to do with the whole Killington Road, and someone should be showing up to that.
Actually, the, the hope is, once we, once we announce it, and announce the planning commission is working at it, is, and then develop a working group that's going to be involved, and, you know, because I'm sure Mr. Salvo and yourself, and everybody will want to keep an involvement in that.
Just, uh, point of order, we never voted on your motion, which, all in favor of your motion to accept the.
Accept the errors and admissions from the listers?
Please say aye.
Aye.
We kind of started signing and never voted on it.
Uh, East, East Mountain Road update, just, we, we talked about it, most of the, the reclaiming is done, uh, there will be a couple of days where there's going to be a little bit more aggravation, as we've got a couple culverts we have to replace.
Mm-hmm.
I believe it's two on East Mountain Road and two on Dean Hill Road, and they will be happening shortly, and we will then also begin the stone lining process, so we're going to be steadily on those roads from now till mid-August, before we get to the paving, um, and yes, we will plan to regrade it as needed, um, because it is building up some potholes at this time, so.
And I have a question that has to do with that. Um, years ago, when Elbow Road was paved along with Courier and Stage and all those, the people who abutted it, that did not have paving, were allowed to sort of get the town's rate if they wanted to pave the twenty feet or so? Is that something that might be available this year, when you do East Mountain Road? I know it's not currently.
We could make that work, I will say that you pay a different rate for aprons, but I could find out what that rate is and pass that along.
Yeah, because I know that there's a lot of driveways over there that are not paved.
Yeah, it just takes a lot more time to do aprons, so they do have a different rate they charge for aprons.
So instead of waiting, like, I don't want to say the, like, now for this one, any of the other future roads that we repave?
We will do that.
Let's get it out to the people long before, we know what we're going to do on a year in advance.
Right.
So, you might get a few people that will accept it.
Yep, which is a benefit to the town.
It's a benefit to the town road.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, tax sale update, um, I get the first draft of all of the, uh, information and warrants on Thursday for review, and then we'll be moving through that process, um, it looks, a couple of them are fairly complicated because of the multitude of issues, but.
How many are there?
There's eight, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and just an update on our loader, our lower hitch pin, which is actually the center of the, has gone, and there, we are still under hours for warranty, but they're telling us that item is not covered in warranty, and we're currently arguing that, but it's a nine thousand dollar repair.
Well, we need it.
So we're looking at what our options are at this point. So, and, and if the, and I got to go back and look, this is either, we either finished paying it, or this was the last year coming up, if we finish paying it, there may be a new loader quickly.
Okay, so since we're talking about a loader that has having problems, I noticed the fire department EMT is, is.
Using the town vehicle.
Is, is sitting in the back of the parking lot, which is not common, I believe it was pushed back there?
Yes, it is going to, it is going to, to.
No, this is the one that goes to everybody's house for.
This is the one that goes Ted, the light rescue is going to Ted Green's, and it's got a few thousand dollars worth of repairs, it's a two thousand five, um, and it's, that's the second set of repairs, and basically, I think we've kept it too long, so we're going to be looking at that in the, this budget year, is how we're going to deal with that.
Okay, but we're going to get it up and running for the rest of this year until?
The expectation is, about two weeks from now, we'll have it back up and running.
Okay.
So, it was just a, a little short-term issue, but they're using the town escape for the, currently is the, uh, light rescue.
All right. Liquor control?
I have nothing.
Good.
And all the business? Do any of you have something you want to bring up that hasn't been on the agenda? Okay, thank you for your letter, I saw it in, I saw it in the Mountain Times.
Executive sessions?
Uh, I don't have anything.
I don't, tonight.
Okay. So do we say motion to adjourn?
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and, and give Pauline a head start.
Yeah.
All in favor at, uh, seven fifty-five?